Official. Jam it. Sorry. Amanda, when I come on before I get started, if you can tell me Jeff, a heads up. I apologize for that.
Don't worry.
So we're going to get started with the town of Andover Board of Selectmen special budget meeting. For February twenty second, twenty twenty two, twenty twenty two, and we're going to get started with Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, your God, invisible liberty and justice. All right, thank you very much. And we're going to move on to public speak. And so we're going to start with Kathy Palazzi.
I'm fine, thank you.
Okay. Jared, we're going to skip you and come back to you because I believe you're gonna be on the agenda. Lynette Harlow.
Yes.
Public speak, would you like to?
No, I'm just here to support Jared.
Okay, you got it.
Thank you.
Good. Diane Griner.
Hello, I would just like to ask that all the board of selectmen have their video turned on. I think it's important to be able to see the expressions and see the faces of who we're dealing with. I think it's important and it's also polite. So I think the speakers and the board of selectmen members should have their video turned on, please.
Diane, thank you very much. As soon as dinner is over, we'll, we'll sit there and get it organized.
Thank you.
No problem.
Yes, as soon as dinner is over, I will turn my camera. You know.
And Scott, thank you for the faces. That really makes me feel good. I appreciate that. Thank you. Bill Penn.
I have no. I have no public comments. I'm here to support Jared Lundberg's scout proposal.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Good day.
Diane Chuket.
I'm all set. Thank you.
All right, Joanne Ebert.
All set, thanks.
All right, and Michael. Okay. Hi, Michael, go ahead.
No, I, I'm just joining the meeting. It's all sorry.
All right. Just got in for public speak, so you got nothing to go? We'll get out with this. First, before we get started, I want to apologize for last week. I had screwed up my schedule and I did not realize we had that meeting. And tonight I'm going to apologize in advance because I have a prearranged meeting that I have to attend, so we're going to get moving. Let's go. All right, so Jared, you are the first person on the agenda for the Eagle Scout project for the transfer station cart program. So if you would like to give us a rundown of what you're thinking and we can sit there and get voting on that.
Yes, I made a bill of materials to basically lay out the what I'm planning on and what, what it'll cost and everything. If I can share my screen possibly.
Go ahead, Jared.
Can you see it? That's not it. That is definitely not it.
Looks like a bill of materials.
It is.
Is it?
Jared, yep.
Yep, okay, perfect. So. Yeah, pretty much it's, it's just the long hinge table as we were talking about when we were at the transfer station and then the sorting table for glass was one, one side of it angled to make it easier to sort and then four bins to make it a little bit more organized for the public to sort their recyclables. And all the materials that will be needed. Yeah, it's.
So I'm assuming Jared that you met with Scott and Jeff, is that accurate?
Yes.
All right, and Scott and Jeff, do you have any comments on Jared's plan?
How, how many bins is this going to be making, Jared? Three, you said in the beginning?
There, so it was four for each of the different kinds of things that we're recycling. Which is glass, cans, small plastic, one liter and two liter.
The bin, the bins are for the people that are sorting, right? So it's.
They're, they're kind of for both, so they'll be stationary for people placing stuff in. And then they can be moved around so they can, so the people at, that are doing cart can sort into specific bins so they can be bagged or done with whatever they need to be done with.
Right.
So just go over what your plan is with the material here, Jared.
Yeah, so, so the plywood would be for the top of the sorting table for the glass and for the, the long hinge table. Because those just need solid surfaces to sort on. And then the two by fours are for structural support for all of the for all of the different things that I'm going to be doing. The four by fours.
I, I, listen, I appreciate you want to go through the whole list, but Scott, if you approve this and Jeff, if you're good with it. Let's, you know, let's, let's move this along.
Did, did Mike Palazzi get a chance to look at this, Jared?
I'm, don't believe so. Well, he was there when we went over it there, but he didn't.
Mike, are you there?
Yes, I'm trying to get into my meeting too. I got a meeting at the same time, but I was there, yes.
So are you okay with everything because you are in charge of cart?
Yeah, I sent the note out to the cart people and I've only gotten response from one of them. And I called Scott and told him that tonight. I think this is going to be an adjustment as time goes on.
Okay.
The biggest complaint I'm hearing is if we put up these three special bins to help segregate the material right on site there, the people won't do it. I said, but they'll do it over time. They won't do a hundred percent ever, but whatever they do fifty percent, sixty percent over time, that's more things they don't have to sort.
Got it. Okay. All right, so let's go back to Scott and Jeff. So you two were at this, this meeting and you understand what Jared is looking to construct for his Eagle Scout project. Are you guys in favor and all set with what his thoughts, thought process is?
Jeff Murray?
Yes, I understand it. He's also going to remove the the metal fence that was part of the old cart as part of this project.
Yep.
Awesome. I make a motion that we accept the Eagle Scout project as submitted.
Where's?
And we need to talk to Eric. We, I mean, he's asking for funds, so we need to find.
That's a board of finance question.
Let's, Jared, if you can get with me after this meeting, I will assist you with the funds.
Okay.
All right. All right, thank you. So Adrian made a motion. Is someone going to second that?
I'll second that.
Okay. Further discussion. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. So five in favor, Jared, thank you very much and Jared. Email me later and I'll assist you. I'll get with other people related to this.
Alrighty, thank you so much.
Good luck.
It's Jared.
Not sure.
Yep, we'll see you later.
Okay, thank you. All right. Sorry. No. My agenda went away there.
Next item up is just discussion of the budget. Item four.
So Adrian, you had a list of items and you saw Eric's list.
I did not see Eric's list. Was that sent over today?
Yes.
I apologize if this is the first time I've been on a computer today, so.
Do you need that list? This, I have it in front of me. So do we, do you need me to read it?
No, I got it. Hang on.
Okay, so let's go to the list that sits there and says major decisions for tonight's meeting.
Yep.
All right. So we have previous meetings to discuss salary increases for collective, for non-collective bargaining positions. You know.
Yeah, I personally, I, I think we already talked about three percent. I think that should include J. Tuttle. Again, when you take a position, if you expect something other than the norm, then you should have negotiated that. My personal take on it.
Okay, does anybody, I, I mean. We're never going to get through that list. Sherry, do you have the actual increases in a spreadsheet that you can get to read to us so that we understand the people that were, or the positions that we're dealing with for these raises?
While she's digging that up, can I make a motion?
Sure, go ahead.
I would make a motion that we set a three percent salary increase for all not collective bargaining positions. Including J. Tuttle.
I'll second that.
So one correction you probably want to make.
Transfer station.
Employees that need more than that to make minimum wage once minimum wage jumps again by state law.
Is that, is that other than the transfer station?
Correct. That actually does not affect the transfer station. That affects a bunch of library employees and I think that may affect some of the registrar, the voting positions.
I didn't see that in your list, so I apologize.
Well, can you amend that?
It's not in your list. I would amend, I'll amend the motion to bring all everyone to bring everyone that is not covered under this up to the state minimum wage.
I'll second.
Okay, so basically that means that any, any employee not covered by a union contract is going to receive a three percent raise. And then anyone that is, that is, that gets the three percent raise and does not get to the state minimum wage is going to be boosted to the minimum wage when it occurs.
Yes, the exception will be the transfer station. We already agreed we would do something with that, so I'll make a motion to that af, affect after if you want.
Right.
So.
That's different.
So let's sit there and vote on this unless anybody has any further discussions on this issue. No, all right, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay.
I would make a motion that we increase the transfer station attendance salaries to eighteen dollars an hour.
All right, and currently the transfer station attendance are at what, Sherry?
Um, hold on a second, please.
They're around sixteen.
Yeah. That's what they are.
Trying to get them closer to the surrounding.
Yeah, with surrounding town.
So we're talking, because you're trying to get them to that rate, it's a twelve and a half percent increase, which they probably deserve for all of the garbage. I'm sorry.
And the fact that they're out all weather.
I was really just thinking about the garbage they deal with.
Yep.
Okay, all right, Paula, you got a smile at that. Come on, that's like what I did with Eric this morning.
It's a, it's a silent smile. She had her mute on.
Jeff, it's household, Jeff, it's household waste products.
Yes, she was, Paula, Paula has a screen of Adrian. That's her, that's her picture that she has up so when she's having dinner, it just sits there.
I have, no, I have my, I'm live, live enough right now.
I don't believe that. If you were live, you would have seconded that motion right as soon as it moved on. Okay, so did someone second?
Okay, well, the transfer station is sixteen thirty two.
And so has, has not been seconded yet.
I thought I seconded it, but maybe, maybe you just didn't hear.
Your, your picture was quiet, so.
I was, I was staying very still. I was miming.
Paula seconded Jeff.
Got it, so. All right, so a ten point three percent increase and Paula seconded it. So further discussion, no, all those in favor? Aye.
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 Aye. Jeff Murray did say aye silently, Amanda.
He raised his hand.
I know, he's good. All right.
Yes, I have my camera on.
All right, so we have covered J. Tuttle related to within the first motion. And then we are at B, potential position changes. Eric, what is that related to?
So we've discussed that of the last three or four meetings. The, so you had asked, the board had asked us to bake in to the budget, a series of potential changes, but you hadn't made any firm decisions on whether you were going to accept them or not. You wanted to see what the effect is on the total budget. And I can kind of list what they are if you would like.
Please.
Okay, so one in the land use department, increasing the building official, the shared service from five to seven hours. Because I think that lines up basically with what our actual usage is. And number two, either make permanent the increase in the ZEOs hours from ten to fifteen a week or add the town planner. And you had asked me for further information on wages and planner information, which I provided. Under the IT budget, increase the IT support from eight to twelve hours a month. I had a discussion again with South Windsor, because although I broached that subject with them several months ago, they had ju, have just now said they will have the capacity to do that if we so chose. I would say IT so far has been one of our biggest employee complaints. Just the lack of timeliness in IT services, just due to the fact that, you know, we're, we basically have four hours of support every two weeks. So this increases that, you know, by fifty percent.
What was your, what was your first thing? I heard the planner, the fifteen hours were at a planner. What was the first thing? I'm sorry.
Land use, five to seven hours.
Okay, didn't we already make that change in this current year, though?
So right now we've increased the ZEOs, at least on a temporary basis, from ten to fifteen hours a week.
Okay.
That's a decision. I, I don't know that you've made that decision permanently, though. I don't object to it.
All right, so you were thinking we're rolling it back?
Well, you tell me, you know, I mean, obviously one option is to bring on a planner for X number of hours or bring on the CEO and increase the CEO's hours or do both or neither. You know, those are really the options. I mean, I think you should do one or the other, basically recommend one or the other. Both would be even better, but you know, again, we have some pretty significant cost constraints, so you may not want to consider that.
So the, the cost difference in the additional hours in the coming budget year would be what?
I don't know if I have that.
Did you type it into the spreadsheet? Would you, would it go one year to the next? Was it already?
Yes. Yeah, you could see it in the spreadsheet.
Okay. So what's the comparison to last year? I'm sorry, I can't have, I get too many screens open.
Right, give me a second.
What's the line item? What's the number?
Should be building department, I think.
So one of them will be building department, which is oh eight oh seven. The other will be the planning and zoning.
Wait, did Scott fall down? Is he all right?
He's fine. He's out looking for something.
Okay, I, I looked up all of a sudden, he was gone.
The other one is oh eight one seven.
So go back to this one, so oh eight, oh, oh, oh eight oh seven salary line?
Yeah.
Correct.
What's the difference, Jeff, last year or this year?
Four, four thousand three hundred and thirty seven dollars.
All right, so I, I mean, I, I wouldn't change it.
Just approve that one, that's.
Yeah, I wouldn't change it back. Do we need to do a separate approval for that?
No, I don't. I, I mean, ultimately you're going to approve the budget. Those were just things we've discussed, but as far as I know, you hadn't made any final decision on.
Well, yeah.
I mean, as far as I'm concerned, I mean.
That was decided while you were in surgery, Eric. Sorry, we should have reached you.
Okay, that's fine.
I had, I don't have a problem with the increasing the hours on the land use side. On the planner, I would sit there and I would push the planner off just simply.
Yeah, I would.
Sure.
Agreed. I, I think at this point we got too much on our plate.
Okay. Anybody have a problem with the planner? Scott, I know you will have.
I think that we're, we have, that's enough for the year. I, I would like to see it happen next year.
I will support you as long as we don't have another bridge fall over. We're good.
The, the one thing that I would ask, I did talk to Jed today and he, he did have a request. If we did not pass the town planner, his request was oriented toward a potentially subcontracting out someone to do the zoning regulations on low income housing or some of the housing issues Eric that are going on and.
Right, I think Jeff Murray had some ideas on that. Did you have a number attached to your ideas, Jeff? No, I didn't, but I think that's the direction we should head in. At least this year. I mean, Eric, what do we need, like four or five thousand to get started on that or?
Ah, you know, hard to tell. Yeah, I mean, five thousand would put a pretty good dent in it.
All right, so I would make a motion that we put.
One, one second, Adrian, before you make a motion. Unless we're anticipating wrapping everything up at this meeting, which I don't necessarily know that we will or can, I mean, I, I would like to sit there and see the final number before we do that.
The final number for what? For a planner?
No, for the budget total.
Well, I mean, we're not the last say anyways. Board of Finance can take out whatever they want when we're done.
Well.
And we all disagree that we need this, so you could, you could always vote no on my motion.
Well, I'm not necessarily saying vote no. I'm saying get a better number.
The number's not great, but the number is what it needs to be. You know, I mean, we're trying to be as frugal as possible here, but also not stay in the dark ages. I mean, we have made an argument for every single thing that we've put in this budget.
So. Okay, so your motion is five thousand dollars for someone to sit there and review.
Well, we can put it in, we can, we'll ask the board of finance to create a fund for five thousand dollars for zoning regulation updating. And that way it can go, if you don't use it all in one year or we don't find somebody, you know, then next year we put more in it if that's what we need to do and we get it done next year.
Okay, so what I would suggest is line item oh eight oh three, three, two, zero, which is the line item for contract planner, which we've used in the past for specialty, you know, one year allocations.
So is it, is it a fu, is it a fund or a line item though? Because.
It's not a fund, it's a line item.
Can we, I'd rather see it in a fund, so if we don't use it all, we can roll it to the next year and if we don't get somebody for that amount of money, then we put more in it the following year to finally get somebody. You know what I mean? That seem reasonable?
So you want to ask the board of finance to create a permanent fund for planning services?
Yes. Does that seem unreasonable before you take a lot of notes?
No, it's not unreasonable. If that's how you want to do it, that's how, I mean, ultimately it's a board of finances decision whether they want to do that, but whether you do it as a permanent standalone fund or whether you do that as a line item is strictly up to you.
I'm just worried that you in the past have said that we have a hard time getting people to work on smaller projects sometimes. And that maybe they won't bite because we don't have the right amount of money or the big enough project and we may have to fund this a piecemeal until we get to a big enough thing, you know? That's my impetus.
All right, make that motion because I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, I would make a motion that we ask the board of finance to add five thousand dollars to our, to a fund for planning services.
I'll second.
All right, further discussion. Paula, Jeff, Scott. Scott, since you're in the zoning area and you're always involved with that, what's your feeling related to that?
Anything is better than nothing.
Okay. All right, well, let's move on. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Okay, we're good.
Did we, um.
I take out the planner, correct?
Take out the planner.
Correct. Okay.
I would make a motion that we increase building official ser, services from five to seven hours. And that we increase the IT budget from what do we, five hours a month to eight? Is that what you're looking for?
Eight to twelve. We're going from eight to twelve a month.
Eight hours to twelve hours per month.
God, eight hours to twelve hours. Why don't you go?
I know. And also permanently put the land use hours at fifteen.
Fine, also permanently amended to, I'll accept the amendment to change the land use hours from ten to fifteen permanently.
Eric, on the IT side, realistically, how many hours do we need? Like really need, like forget like what you're going to get, like what would you like to have?
You know, the long and the short of it is to me, the difference is in the timeliness of response. The more hours you have, the quicker we can get to stuff. I mean, everything gets done eventually.
Do you still, so can you answer the question? Do you need four hours a week?
I mean, four hours a week would be better than four hours every two weeks. I, I mean, I, I'd love to go to four hours a week, but I mean, you know, I'd like support in a lot of areas.
With this change, you're basically looking at three hours per week. If, if we go by what's, what we're, what we've talked about. Your eight to twelve.
Well, yes, no. Twelve hours a mo, yeah, three hours a week, yes.
Give or take. Is that how they're allotting it to you or are they allotting it to you differently?
No, so normally what we're doing is we're doing a four hour block every two weeks. And the prob, the, the reality is it takes, you know, when David's onsite, it takes a certain amount of time. You know, if you're initializing a computer or whatever you're doing, it takes a discrete block to do it. So we, we've kind of settled on that as the most efficient way.
So this is giving you fifty percent more than you have right now?
Correct.
All right, let's use it as a launching pad for next year. Go ahead, make your motion.
Well, the motion's already in place, so it's increase our IT from eight to twelve. Make building official hours permit from ten to fifteen hour, going from ten to fifteen hours as a permanent change. And increase the official shared services building official from five to seven hours.
Someone want to second that?
I'll second.
Okay, further discussion on those three points? Anybody have any problems with any of them? Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
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 I love the delay. The delay is just the best part about the.
It's very strange.
No, it's perfect. All right. All right, Adrian, what do you have next on your, your list?
Ah, well, let's take them piecemeal because I don't know what's going to be, um, what's going to be, uh, upsetting or not upsetting. So I would want to see the promotion, which you already talked about of Richard Biggins from nineteen one to nineteen or two. That would be my first motion. He's already doing the, he's already qualified. He's basically doing it, so. And he already worked for the.
Let's go back to the, this was probably either before Eric. Didn't we discuss this and you're just saying we haven't voted on it?
I know we discussed it, but we haven't made it official. We did not.
Then, then make the motion.
I just did.
Somebody seconded. I'll second. Oh, I seconded it, man. All those in favor? Aye.
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 And the delay.
It's good. It's, 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 it makes me smile, Jeff.
Paula's got to pull his hand.
All right.
So, all right, I would, my next motion for public works would be to institute bringing in a addition, a full-time summer helper.
And again, we've, we've. And again, we've, we've discussed this.
We've discussed, but we haven't, we have not accepted it.
Alright, and the total cost related to the, the summer help, just so everybody's aware?
We're under twenty, right?
Twenty thousand.
Twenty.
Even.
Did someone, uh, second that? Did Paulie second that?
I'll second, yep.
Okay, all those.
Do we need discussion?
We've discussed it already.
Okay, just want to make sure. I don't want to feel like.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Now he's doing it on purpose.
Paul, nice work. Um, you are delaying this meeting for, um, go ahead, Adrian, next.
Um, add an additional maintainer one to the staff at Public Works full-time.
Okay, and Sherry, the total cost of this? Well, somebody second it.
I'll second.
Alright, Sherry, cost of that.
Salary, salaries at sixty thousand and insurance is twenty seven six.
I don't think the salary is sixty thousand, it's less than that for a maintainer one.
Maintainer one, so it's one step down.
Well, it's. That's the amount I put in, so.
Hang on, I, I'd give you that in a sec.
Let's just make a note that we address that though before we send that to Board of Finance, that the number is correct, please.
Yep.
Thank you.
Welcome. Well, we haven't voted yet.
What is the number?
No, I, I'm just saying if it passes. Give or, give or take your total, it's, it's, uh, what, sixty, sixty-four, isn't it something like?
So the salary would be forty seven thousand, six hundred.
That one's.
Three dollars for a maintainer one.
And twenty for medical?
And how much? Wait a second, wait. What's the hourly rate, Eric, on the contract?
So the hourly rate.
Twenty-two.
The new rate will be twenty-two eighty-eight.
Oh, but I think she, she, but she has, but she has town FICA probably rolled in.
Well, this is, um, new, new rate is twenty-two eighty-eight an hour. It's on our spreadsheet.
So, so at forty hours, it's, it's forty-seven thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars. And then I'm sure there'll be some overtime, which is accounted for in a different line item.
Line item, yeah.
Correct.
So it's forty-seven thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars and forty cents. Okay, so plus benefits, so maybe she was adding benefits to the.
That's what I'm thinking, that I think your sh- your number, Sherry, probably has MRF and.
Yeah.
Murf FICA have rolled in.
They do.
Okay, that's where the difference is.
Yeah, for the record, the, oh, yes, the full-up cost for maintainer one, you know, is seventy thousand, uh, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Okay. Alright, so, uh, did someone second that? Paula?
Yes.
Further discussion, just, just so, uh, we as a board are, you know, making this decision really kind of limits us in a lot of other areas, so if we're all in favor of, um, pushing forward with, Public Works and giving Public Works more people, you know, it's going to limit us in doing other things potentially. So just everybody needs to be aware of that as we vote on this.
I just, my, my only comment, I agree with you. And my only comment though is that if we are going to try to maintain our costs, as we start to do more roadwork, the easiest way to do that is to have staff in-house that can complete more of the work that we would otherwise need to subcontract, whether it's basin replacement, drainage work, drainage prep, backfilling on a, on a road that's been paved, you know, all of those things, you know, cost money. And if we don't do them in-house, we pay someone else to do them and that is genuinely more expensive. Period. So that's my, that's my spiel.
Okay. Uh, anyone else?
I agree with Eric's, I mean, Adrian's position.
Okay. Alright, all those in favor? Aye.
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 Alright. Let's go to, uh, the next issue, Adrian, on the list.
Yep, so the, the next I've got, um, that we had still hanging, um, is administrator's office increased to admin position hours.
Okay. Are we gonna make a motion to do that, or is this one of those items that were, were kind of?
I'd like, I'd like to, uh, I'll make a motion so we can go into discussion. Motion to increase the hours on the position to full-time.
Thirty-four hours.
Thirty-four, thirty-four hours?
Yes.
Okay.
And what's the total increase if we do that, Sherry?
How much is it gonna cost?
Yep.
Eighteen thousand, twenty-one is on the spreadsheet. Because the increase is thirty-nine thousand, three ninety-one.
Okay, that's salary alone, remember there's also significant benefit increase.
Just salary alone, and then, um, there'll be a, an insurance increase too.
And MRF.
Twenty-one thousand and then MRF. Yep. At eighteen percent.
So somewhere in the range of forty-two to forty-three thousand, Eric, is that about right?
That is about right.
It's not right, yeah.
Okay. Um, okay.
Uh, do we have a second so we can get into discussion?
Yes, I second.
I'm sorry, I probably just bought in here.
I thought you seconded too, Paul.
Thank you, Jeff.
I saw Jeff's hand go up, I never heard it.
My hand?
No, the other Jeff. The delayed Paul.
Alright, so, so, um, you know, where, where I stand on this is I, I would, I would love to see this occur, but I also sit there and look at this and going, if we're gonna make all these other decisions, it's probably one of the items that we're going to have to potentially delay, um. You're, you're just, you know, we're, we're, we're probably somewhere north of three hundred to four hundred thousand dollars in total increases across the town budget right now. It's gotta be, we gotta pick what we think are the most important priorities. So if Public Works is the most important priority, then we're going to have to have some things not, uh, move forward. So that's just me.
Oh, Jeff, our number one, our number one complaint and concern this year that I've heard overwhelmingly is the roadwork, and I think we're.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's mine too.
And unfortunately, you know how the budgets go, we can only, we can only absorb so much in, in one year that I think the public will swallow as far as an increase.
Okay, um, well, let's, let's, uh, let's get on the record as to what we're trying to do. So, uh, all those in favor?
Well, can, what, can we back up? Are we still?
We're gonna go on, yeah. Paul?
No, I'm just, I'm just reading what Eric said.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I was doing. I was gonna ask a couple questions around that, but if we're not.
Well, if you'd like to, you go ahead. I, I give everybody fair opportunity to question or ask questions or get information.
Eric, we asked you to give us a list of the things that would be additional. I see all the list of things she's doing. Um, under current roles and responsibilities, and you said that additional things that you want her to do, did I miss something or is it just the three items at the bottom?
No, those are, I mean, those are the biggest three for me. I mean, the reality is, you know, I use Amanda's kind of an all-purpose to fill in everywhere. She actually doesn't do all that much in terms of assist me directly. Um, and that's for two reasons. One, she's there less than half the number of work hours I am in the week. So most of the time when I need something, there's nobody there anyway, um, you know, and secondly, you know, there's enough on her plate. Um, you know, and, and the reason it's on her plate is because as a board, you've made a decision that you wanted to really emphasize communication.
No, I get that. I mean, I can read the document that you, you put in the packet that's available to us on the public. My point is, I just want to understand what you're saying. Free up your time by transitioning some of your administrative work to her, exactly what you're thinking. Like, for instance, you mentioned the VoIP, I would be concerned that, I don't know that Amanda has a background and in the technical side of VoIP, which is, was, is a big part of it, isn't it? No?
Yes, but neither do I.
Oh, okay, I, you bluffed your way through fairly well then, because I, I thought you actually grasped it pretty well, I.
I mean, I know what I want, um, you know, yeah.
You know, I attended that meeting, um, and, you know, there was some, there was some open-ended questions. I got a few of the answers and, and Amanda was just, uh, gathering up that information and sending it on to the, the vendor. And I think we're pretty much wrapped up with that mostly.
Yeah, look, I'm just saying that that's a kind of a thing that's, that I look at as an example. And that's something that, that basically I did most of the legwork on start to finish. But that's something I would have happily pawned off on somebody else if I could have.
Alright, so, so is, you know, this is not the easiest one of us, the one to vote on, so, uh, simply, we need to sit there and do that, so let's just call vote on it. So all those in favor? The dog is in favor.
She's very much in favor. The coyotes are out.
All those opposed? Uh, okay. Alright, all those that abstain?
And, and I'm gonna say why I'm saying, I was saying.
No, the rest of us do not need to hear why you're abstaining.
I'm gonna tell you anyways, I, I, my idea is personally that I would rather put something in the budget. And if Board of Finance or the town as a whole feels that it's not appropriate, and we've made a valid argument for it to let them say no. You know, we, we know that we need this, but, you know, we keep stalling on it. So that's, that's my only take on it. I, I would rather let the town say, I don't want better communication. I don't want our town administrator have more help than us do it.
I think we're all in agreement that it's, it's just, we want Eric to be more productive, right?
So I know, I, I just feel like we're struggling on this one, and I, I honestly, I know the budget sucks, so.
Listen, Adrian, you're not wrong. I mean, that position should, we should do a lot in this town, but.
I know, and, and I know.
It's getting, it's getting through, it's getting through to the financial realities of where we're at and what is occurring, so.
I guess I am more optimistic that the town as a whole realizes that we are, we've been lacking. You know, and I, I, but that's my only take. Maybe I'm, for once, I'm the optimist in the room, so I'll take that moment, because that's not your only me, so.
So a taxed and tax and spend Republican.
No, I think a conservative Republican that realizes that we've been too conservative for too long and now we're paying for it.
Okay, alright, so I, I'm, 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 no, I don't think any one of us is gonna debate that issue. I think it's just a situation where I think we're in for a heavy lift with this budget. I think there's a lot.
I don't disagree with.
And, and I, and I do believe that they're all positive things for the community, and to be really honest, we should do them all, but I think in certain cases, we're gonna have to pick and choose, and I think if we're defending every one of them, we're, we're gonna be in trouble.
We're being honest, I know.
So.
But it's, it's hard either way.
And to add to Adrian's comments, I mean, it's, we have to wait all these additions that we're doing. And like I drive up, coming home on Hendy Road and the road is actually falling off on their side. I mean, those are things, we have to keep our roads up, I'm sorry, but we have to put some money into their.
No, I, I get it, but as we start to do more roadwork, eventually that's gonna put more pressure on Eric to be, you know, double checking Public Works and, and Jay and, and helping try to find, I mean, to, to Eric's credit, you know, we, we were able to get some, some grant money, you know, to be able to do some of the paving. You know, those things happened because Eric had time to do it. So, again, I, it, the, the vote's done, I get it, so I'll let it go, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Alright, um, what other main issues do we have to address before I exit this meeting?
Okay, um, I think the last thing is really review of the capital fund allocations. And make sure that you're all on board with what I recommended for capital fund allocations.
I don't believe any of us brought up anything as far as changes to that.
Okay.
Well, let, let's, I mean, I was reviewing it before the meeting, I mean, it's really not that. So, Public Works capital equipment, proposal for this year's one-ten. Oh, no, sorry, one-fifteen.
Correct, yeah.
And, and Jeff, that is largely driven by the fact that when, you know, we're looking at, um, some really steep increases in equipment costs right now. To put it in perspective, in two thousand and nineteen, we bought a Peterbilt plow truck. It was a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars delivered. That same truck identically specced right now is two sixty-five. So there's been over a thirty percent increase, um, just in that one item, um, in four years. So we're, we're faced with some pretty significant headwind in that category.
Um, yes, so, uh.
I don't, yeah, I don't think we have anything else budget-wise.
Thank God, we, thank God this board bought that Peterbilt truck in two thousand and nineteen, right?
Well, we're, we're buying and we're gonna ask to buy another one, but we're gonna buy a, a freightliner because it's literally thirty thousand dollars cheaper.
Um, so let, let's just go through the proposed, so the Fire Engine Fund proposal is a hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
You know, my question on that one, and I, I know you had something in there, and last year we put in sixty thousand and the current balance is forty. Why is that? Because we're buying supplies?
Uh, yeah, that balance should be close to zero. This doc, this capital fund allocation's a couple months late, they finally got the washer dryer. Um, so they wiped out the majority of that.
Okay, alright. Building maintenance, sixty thousand dollars, that should be higher. Um, Bunker Hill Bridge Replacement, a hundred and twenty. So that leaves us, that will get us to four hundred thousand dollars or pretty close.
Right, within a couple thousand, yeah.
Which is our number that we need to sit there and do that construction project.
No, that's, we're delaying once, and we're gonna spend at least that much on the follow-on year. Unless we can get ourselves that, the reason why I didn't want to increase that to what the actual value should be right now is because I think there's a reasonable chance the federal reg change is gonna, is gonna allow us a greater contribution from the federal government, but we just don't have the state guidelines on that yet. So I'm actually hoping the cost of the Bunker Hill Bridge Replacement, um, goes down a little bit, but, but I can't guarantee it.
Yeah, I mean, and right now we're still in design phase, so we're okay. We don't, when do we have to have the money in place?
Realistically, a year and a half from now.
Oh.
So we got two more budget cycles to fund it, this one and the next one.
Alright, and when are we getting done? I thought you said the project was started April of twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-two?
Well, it's not gonna be twenty twenty-two, you know, considering where they're at now, I don't think it'll be twenty twenty-three either. I think we're looking at start of construction in twenty twenty-four.
Oh, yeah. We hope we don't.
That's not what, that's not what I heard la- at the last meeting, Eric.
Well, I mean, they said optimistic. If you look at the actual timetables, you know, they're talking about construction spring twenty twenty-four. Um, the engineer says he thinks there's still some possibility of a twenty twenty-three construction season. But there's no, that's not in the timeline right now. So the follow-on bridge designer would have to step up their game and exceed their milestones to do that. Is how I would put it.
Alright, well, as long as we're not required to have all of the funding up this year before they get started, that, that would be my big concern. So if that's not the case, then I have no problem with it.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're slowly building to where we need to be.
Alright, so the Bridge and Culvert Fund is a hundred thousand dollars with a current balance of a hundred and twenty-seven, that's not enough. Alright, so the Bridge and Culvert Fund is a hundred thousand dollars with a current balance of a hundred and twenty-seven, that's not enough. The Tree Fund is seventy-five thousand dollars with eighteen thousand dollars in, in the fund currently, that's not enough. Roadwork Fund is proposal of three-thirty with a hundred and fifty thousand currently in the fund, that's not enough. Town Aid Road gets us a hundred and ninety-three thousand with a current balance of ninety-five. Revale is a standard sixteen-five, and, uh, Plan of Conservation and Development Fund is five thousand dollars, so those are all the capital. The capital fund allocations, I, I don't have any problems with any of those, does anybody want to increase or decrease any of those line items?
I don't think we can afford to, even though we need to, so.
I mean, we need to go up, but does anyone wanna decrease?
No, god, that'd be the worst thing we could do.
Okay, so do we wanna approve that, do we need to approve that?
I mean, uh, the one thing I could throw out there is, do we, do we need the sixteen and change, considering we just did a revow, or is that money we need to put aside for? Excuse me, for, for legal?
There's only ten thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars left from the last revow, which means we put in basically that much each year, and they, he has.
Oh, I understand that, I'm just. Just asking.
Well, we're better off.
Trying to find you a nickel on the haystacks.
If we're better off to, 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 uh, stay for those types of projects anyway, because we'll never get it all up front in one month, one year anyway. So, I have no problem with that.
Do we wanna have Sherry finalize the sheet, and then we'll just vote on that final number after the fact?
Yes.
Then at that point, unless we have something else on that thing.
I was gonna suggest just that, what I was gonna do is update the salary spreadsheet that you currently have to reflect. The changes, and then also update the overall budget to come to a bottom-line percentage. And when I'm, I'm finished with that, I go over it with Eric, then we'll send out a copy to each of you.
Okay, alright, uh, Adrian, if you could, could you handle correspondence and public speak for me?
So, I have one further thing that's not represented on the funds. And that is, one of the recommendations I had is that we consider setting up a senior transportation fund. We've been lucky the last two cycles, and that we've been able to get our vehicles funded by federal grants. But that's not always gonna be the case, um, you know, those grants are somewhat difficult to get. I think we oughta set aside us, some funds yearly for senior transportation and vehicle replacement.
I can, but we don't really have the funds right now to do that this year.
We don't, we don't.
Uh, I, I, I would sit there and tell you, um, I believe, uh, our, our, our tremendous senior coordinator, Kathy Plazey. Got us a, a grant for a vehicle this, this time around, is that correct, Eric?
She's done it like the last three times around.
Thank you so much, Kathy, which greatly appreciated, so maybe in the next budget cycle, we worry about putting money away for that.
Fair enough.
So you're off, Jeff, well.
Jeff, before you run, um, before you run, we don't have another meeting scheduled, do we wanna try and do that now? Or are we gonna do that through email?
Um, we can schedule it from Mondays are always better for me. So do you wanna do next Monday, quick? I mean, that gives it time to get to the Board of Finance, correct? Adrian, do you have a problem with that date?
I do not.
Looking, you're looking like it's, uh.
What's the date? Twenty, okay.
Can you do that?
Yeah, worst, worst case, I'll call in. Diane will have to deal with me not having a camera today.
She can, she can live with it, alright, okay, thank you very much, everybody, bye-bye.
There's Jeff.
Alright, uh, public comment, Kathy Plazey?
Thank you for the compliment, always appreciated, love my job, I know it's a voluntary job, it's the best job I ever had, love it. You're doing a great job, guys, keep it up.
Thank you, Kathy.
Keep it up.
Victoria?
I'm all set, I was late to the party.
Well, luckily, it is recorded, Victoria, so you'll be able to catch it again. Uh, Joan Hebert?
All set, thank you.
I'm sorry, I said Joan, Joanne, I apologize.
That's okay.
Uh, if that is it, then motion to adjourn?
Wait, Diane, you missed Diane Granier.
I can't see any of those people. Why are they not showing up on my thing? You have anything to say?
Oh, I, I'm all set, uh, thank you, good to see all your faces.
Oh, she doesn't have a camera on, okay, that's ironic. That is very ironic, Diane Granier. Thank you, Miss Granier, you got to see me in my jammies, so. Diane Chocat, you're all set?
Uh, the only question I have is.
We don't have questions.
For you guys to, I do have a question.
Comments only.
Um, the community center.
We'll address it at the last meeting.
Okay, thanks.
We still have to vote on total.
Okay.
Alright.
What was the question?
Um, how we are, if we are gonna fund it this year, how we are gonna fund it, because there's been talk about using the American Cares Act money for that. So we would put that in the budget, so it goes through as a budget, a piece of the budget. And that way it's done, and it gives the community a chance to have input. Rather than us just making a decision, I mean, we, we have purview on the funds, but asking the community for permission, I think is the best way to go, so. That's what we're kind of moving towards.
Fair enough.
Paula, can you second?
I'll second.
Alright, all favor, motion to adjourn?
I.
We are four, zero, and Jeff is absent. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Great, good night, thank you.
Cheers.